It's like Slim's got a little paper cut.
It's nothing.
Come on, man. You know I'm gonna make you tell me.
Hey, kidney transplant.
When, dude? I didn't know you were sick.
I was donating it.
You gave your kidney to a complete stranger?
Yeah.
Saved his life.
And save a life by being a living organ donor on matchingdonors.com.
Alright guys, thank you so much for coming. I'm sorry we're a little bit late, but we ran the information from the five country right over. So thank you all for coming in. I want to call this meeting to order. Do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Okay, let's all do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And, we're different.
Well, I thank you so much for this day and I thank you for this group of people. And I just pray that you would help us to be wise in our decision making and help us to see what's best for our community. And we know that you love people and you love taking care of them. And I just pray that you would help us to see how to do that best. It's in your name that we pray.
Thank you. Okay, guys, so this month, we started, just for those that don't know, that we started to recognize one of the hospital employees every month for their outstanding services. And even though we still haven't come up with the process, exact process yet, we will. But in the meantime, I had someone suggested to me this month that I think is well deserving. And I would like to say that for her outstanding services to our community and dedication to our hospital, this month is Melissa Thomas. This is, and maybe we'll give you back points.
Okay, on it.
Anyway, just, you have done an amazing job since you took over this matter. And you should be very proud because we're very proud. So, we make a prayer right here. How fun it is?
Always fun. Always fun. Thank you for, I guess, believing in me and trusting in my way that I'm trying to make things better and take care of the residents because that's ultimately what's in my heart, is doing what's best for them. So, thank you for believing and trusting in me and I appreciate the recognition.
We know that's so awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's great. Okay. Do we have any visitor comments?
Albert's here to support Melissa.
That's amazing. I'll go talk later. It's good to see you guys. Do you hear anything you want to say?
What?
Do you hear anything you want to say?
There's pie.
Tell us your name first.
Charlotte.
Charlotte. And thank you for coming. You can't have pie. We don't have any cookies.
Well, you're better letting mom and dad decide.
Okay, Grandma.
No, that's the nurse part.
Well, I was gonna say, you have more green kids than I do. Okay. Well, that's wonderful. Support for Melissa. Okay, are there any changes to the agenda?
Can I add one thing that I left off? I need to add Heritage MRI under new business or old business. We're gonna put it, but I need to add that. Heritage MRI, so it's an MRI company we'll talk about here with help Keisha. It is near. But I didn't want to tell you where to speak something. Sure, agenda. Yeah, I guess you're right. I didn't want to indicate the place on the agenda for that object.
Thank you. Did everyone get to look at all the minutes? The governance minutes, the quality minutes, the finance minutes, and the last meeting minutes? Did we all get to see those? Do we have any questions? Any changes? Okay, well, sorry with you. I'm going to ask for an approval for all the minutes at one time. May I have a approval for the minutes?
I motion to be approved.
Anna, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, let's dive right in. Surgeon?
Finance?
Yep.
Financial reports, I think actually we still have that top sheet. I can actually talk to them. So it's two pages, so. So just so everyone is aware, Meditech is still eating our homework. It's not necessarily anybody's fault, but I can give you data out of it, but it's garbage data.
I already have them.
So we're just gonna hold off on doing that for now. And we're gonna use the data that we know is good. And we'll talk to that, and I apologize, and we'll have better data for you as soon as we can. On the top sheet is debits versus credits. I'm gonna let Jennifer talk about that because she's developed this for us so that we have a good idea of what's happening everywhere. Oh, this is Jennifer Spol. She's our accountant and doing a fantastic job.
So, what I did was I have access to the First Northern of Wyoming bank account. So I took all of our bank accounts and I downloaded them and put them on spreadsheets, Excel spreadsheets, and separated debits versus credits versus transfer of funds. So, the operating receipts account, which is the account where all of the funds come into. So like all of our ACH funds and all of our funds that are coming out of the hospital. So we have $1,309,372.81. Out of the operating receipts, the cardinal for the retail pharmacy, it's really hard to get that account transferred. So, $59,728.03 was taken out of the receipts account. And out of the operating receipts account, I transferred $1,230,000. Out of the operating receipts account, there was a return item, a chargeback. So somebody wrote a check, the check bounced. It was $10,173. Harry Ackley, we had $1.64 in interest. In the operating disbursements, we had $70.53 in interest. And operating disbursements for accounts payable and payroll, so anything that's paid out for the hospital district. We paid $1,665,246.99. Out of the operating disbursements, $1,455,000 was transferred from other accounts. The retail pharmacy account, they had $398,850.01. Out of the retail pharmacy account, there was $273,845.11 bills. In the retail pharmacy, the transfer of funds for payroll was $8,000. The merchant account, we have, which is all over our credit cards. So like when they swipe the credit cards for like the wellness Wednesday's, there is $151,820.97. The merchant fees was $3,041.40. So when you, when someone pays with their credit card, we have fees. And that's what those fees are. For the merchant account, the transfers of funds to cover the accounts payable and payroll was $145,000. And the money market interest was $9,789.37. The money market, the transfers of fund to cover the accounts for the payroll and accounts payable was $10,000. And the reason why that $10,000 was transferred is because of the return item chargeback for the $10,173 we needed to cover that funds. The total credits was $1,869,905.33. Total debits is $2,012,345.3, making it a balance of negative $142,129.20. The money transfers for debits was $1,465,000. The money transferring credits was $1,465,000, which zeros out. And this is without our Medicare money. So things should start looking up. Does anybody have any questions?
Going back to that, the $10,000, you said that was a bounce?
Yes.
So when we cover that, that'll go back into the money market? Is that the idea?
So, what our goal is, is when we hit that million dollars or with the million dollars...
We don't even told them yet because they're in email. And I'm like, no, no, fine. Why don't you tell them? Because Sandy sent them an email, but it was for something.
So tomorrow, we should get a really nice, I think it might even be like $1,068 or something like that. I don't have the number off the top of my head. So we've been waiting months and months and months for this money. And they've given us the go-arounds and Sandy's been on the phone every single day trying to get the money. And they've given her hassles and then they tell her one thing and then they're come. So we've had like the governor and we've had other people involved.
So Harry Hagaman has been helping us with the final comment on the Medicare. So the Medicare money is supposed to come to us tomorrow. Sandy received a letter, I don't know if you guys saw that email, from Medicare saying tomorrow, $1,068,000 should be deposited in our accounts.
Do I have the amount? Do you want the exact?
Yeah, will you give them the exact amount, please?
And our goal, our goal is to put all of that in the money market, try to operate on all of our other accounts until we absolutely have to pull. So we want to be able to capture how we're capturing like the negative $142,000. We want to capture every month where we're truly standing and know how much money we're taking out of that account. So that when we're...
Jennifer, thank you so very much.
Jen, thank you.
And are you gonna roll out?
Yeah. Yeah, and she developed all that, that whole sheet. And I think I did do a slightly different version than hers, but this is something we're gonna give you every month so you know where we stand.
If you don't mind, we're gonna call this the Jamie Farsworth inaction.
Yes, this is a bad one.
Fantastic. Well, we know that, we know that you were working on it too for a really long time. So this is a combination of months and months and months of work. So thank you.
Quakers really worked hard on trying to get Meditech to do the best they can with what Meditech is. And I think we essentially tied our pipes and then put a millstone around her neck and then wondered why she couldn't swim with that system. Alright, so.
Are you done?
Well, no, there's a second page.
I'm very sorry.
No, that's okay. I just, I want to throw on some, I throw on some historical cash documentation just so you know where our cash investments were, where they are now, and days cash on hand. So using both formulas, so using the most aggressive formula gives us 137 days cash on hand, down from 140 last time. And using the less aggressive formula gives us 68 days cash on hand versus 70 last month. So just so you guys can keep track of it. So slight decrease overall in our cash on hand.
And what is the goal?
As many as possible. So.
What would make you feel comfortable?
So anything over 90 is considered great.
As I thought.
Right before COVID hit, the average critical access hospital had, I think, around 40 days cash on hand. In the middle of COVID, because the government gave us all so much money, we had 180, like most hospitals in general. And now nobody knows. The financial documents have gotten so messed up from COVID across the board. I was talking to Casey Peterson at length. Nobody knows. So the average is fourth coming. But we're okay for right now. And then months at current burn of savings, I throw, I'm throwing that on there so that as long as we're still not operating at a positive, you know how many months we can go using up our savings account as we're currently using. And that's 14.8 months. Yeah, so over a year, run how we're running. And I think there's actually been improvement in the last three, four months from the team here. And that burn seems to be slowing down. When I first calculated, when I first got here, it was nine. So we've already made it to 14. I think that's gonna get better, especially if we move the clinic. I think that erases about half of our deficit and all honesty. And then takes us a long way. And we're gonna talk about those patient care loans. And I think you're gonna like what I have to say. I think you're gonna like it a lot.
Okay. Leanne, the committee report, finance committee?
Well, we worked. They're working on getting the financials straightened out. Kelly Klein is working with Piper on getting those accounts reconciled. And so we have good numbers to go by. The overtime report was a little high, but we were trying to avoid traveling travelers because they're really, really expensive. We talked about Cerner AR and Epic AR, Sandy did. And so, you know, all those things are being looked at and worked on. And the one thing, I know, Judge sends this out to you guys, the board. And the one thing that I didn't notice on here before was this section right here. This little section right here talks about our long-term debt. So as a board, when we're looking at spending more money for something, we need to keep these figures in mind so we know that these are obligations that we need to consider before going hog-wide. So, I think that's really about it. There were some Meditech issues as always. This is all the minutes. You could read this in the minutes anyway. Oh, the debt book. We like that debt book because it's gonna give us a better tally of our leases and when they're coming due and our subscriptions. Because we have gobs of subscriptions that we really don't know. They're usually annual, sometimes quarterly. And so it's good to have those in the back of our mind. So when we consider financials, we need to consider those things as well. The Upton doc is still on, the grants for Upton are still on the table for renovation. The HVAC in O2 is scheduled for installation. The new task clinic, as we already talked about, is being looked at. Another option, maybe in-house. We also talked about service line increases. What can we do to improve our financial picture? And we talked about NO, pain management with injections and pain and rehab for now. And those are the things. Maybe sleep studies later on. And the DME has already went to a cash and carry through the pharmacy. So that's one area that we've always lacked is DME. You know, the walkers and the wheelchairs since Medicare is no longer here. So those are the things that were transferred over to the pharmacies. So it's all good.
Any questions?
There's always Meditech issues.
Printers, so real quick, because I talked to you. We were spending between $5,300 and $7,800 a month on printers. I've been working with the lawyer, Allison. She's amazing. I think there's a chance we can cut some of those contracts. And then Wendy and the teams here have been working great on cutting down how much stuff they print because we found out through this research that we pay for every page we print from zero on. There's no like baseline number. So every single page we print, we pay them, along with the paper, along with the printing, along with everything.
What is that?
It's between like 14 cents and 39 cents or something like that. So it's pretty substantial price per page.
Any varies depending on what you're doing.
I know.
There's 60-some, I believe, if I remember right. And we're cutting 20-some of them out with Wendy's help.
There's like one per week.
It feels like it, huh? Okay. And so that's, I'm gonna stop at that for printers. Now, next up is, I'm gonna let you talk. Sorry. Alright, because I was just gonna keep rolling. So I have thank you letters written for Harry Hagaman because without her, we would never have gotten this Medicare money, in my opinion. And also for Chip and Alan, that I would like the board to sign and everybody else at the table to sign that hasn't. Because these people went out of their way to help us a ton. So in the manner side, it was $300,000 that Medicaid was holding on to since September. And we were stuck. Chip and Alan got involved. And that very day or the next day, we were getting calls from Medicaid saying how sorry they were and they want to help us. So hallelujah. Thank you.
Yep, that's amazing.
Oh.
You said they had letters to send.
Yeah, they're coming.
Is this a done? Yes. No, that's my thing. Here, this one's done. Okay, Karen.
Med staff credentialing, we have Dr. Vanessa Sui? Sui? David Delman and Dujit Singh. They're all of flu gynecology. There's some of the ones that were trickling in. There's nothing concerning in their credentialing charts. Vanessa's fresh out of school. So she's not quite board certified, but she's waiting to sit for them. So they looked them over yesterday in quality. We didn't have any issues with them, so. And they went through med staff too, so.
I make a motion to approve credentialing. Thank you. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Med staff report, you guys were there this last one for the joint conference. So Joy discussed some back orders. There's a tornado at the Pfizer building of all places. So she's been watching for any back orders or any issues that are coming from that. We looked at possibly getting a fire safe for the clinic so we can keep some heat all over there. It's flammable, so right now we can't keep it over there. We talked about man or narcan standing order, just in case you never know. Melissa talked about the nursing home report. We're admitting when we can. At the time, we had two to three waiting to come in. And our Jerry's psych, Dr. Gomi, he's still gonna be consulting, but he does have a new nurse practitioner starting. So she'll start taking over and seeing some of his patients. Plum health, Carmen's just catching up now.
Yeah.
Still busy.
We have a new nurse and she's amazing, so.
Good.
We talked about QTC physicals, which are VA physicals. It'd be a one-time physical and can help, you know, with disabilities and stuff like that. So we just would need one of our providers to set aside some time and do those physicals. And I think we have one that said that he was interested in doing it. So just getting him going with that. Gym and lab, we had a lab reagent object. The PSA reagent was on back order. I think we might have it in now, but at the time it was on back order. Radiology shortages. Keisha talked about a shortage of IV contrast. We're only allocated three boxes a month, so it's about 30 per month. But we were all stocked up, ready to go for sturgis. Luckily, we didn't have to use a whole bunch of it. And we discussed credentialing. It for med staff. Moving into quality, we met yesterday and it was actually a pretty quick meeting. The last couple have been pretty nice. We went over our incidences for the month. We didn't have a whole lot, which is nice. Talked about our current number of temp staff. We've got two in the lab, nine in long-term care. We've got one OT coming and then one PR and then the pharmacy. We talked about our transfer times. They were down from last month, so we're getting our patients out as they need. Clinics, we talked about surveys. We're probably gonna be, well, we are going to a new survey vendor. We kind of took a look at that in quality and it's a lot easier on the eyes and less questions and just more, I feel like, user-friendly on their end and my end. If they give us anything less than a three, it pumps them to explain why they're giving us less than a three. It allows them to recognize an employee, you know, if Angie went above and beyond, they can say that Angie Phillips went above and beyond. And so then that triggers me to go say, Angie confused so much.
Does it tell who served them, like the chief employee that served you?
Yep.
Oh, that's good. Because a lot of people aren't gonna remember that.
Well, I lied. It doesn't tell you who.
Oh.
But. But, you know, if they introduce themselves and they remember, or they just know her.
Okay. I just thought maybe it wouldn't say.
No.
Your doctor was or...
It shows you a picture of the doctor you saw. But it doesn't show you or tell you who your nurse was. But there is also a box that they can choose that says that they want to be contacted for feedback or they want to give me feedback. But, you know, if they just had a horrible experience, they can check the box, put their information in, and I can do service recovery right then. And then I can call them and figure out what the issue is, so.
I have a question. Can we move on? You said there weren't very many. What do you think is the goal on that action queue? What's our standard? Above, below?
I mean, you need some incidences because if you don't have any incidences, then people just aren't reporting things that need to be reported. So I'd say maybe an average of maybe 10 a month is a good.
Is that the goal?
Is it good? Yeah. You know, we obviously don't want zero incidences because then it means that somebody's not...
It's not suspicious.
Yeah.
So this month's count was, we had 22, but previous months we had 40.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I asked the question. And what's our standard, so to speak?
Yeah, I'd say no less than 10. Less than 10 is suspicious.
Something's not.
Yeah.
What the other thing that makes it good is, is that the incidences in the manner have drastically dropped this month. And the matters in the manner have drastically dropped. So I would say that's good.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. Always good.
And my goal for it is that the severity of incidences goes down. While the number stays around 10 to 20. How significant they are goes down and down and down. It means we're making improvements and stuff so that people have less that they're worried about and patients are getting a care that you need.
Yes.
Do you just want to add that there was quite a few falls and that...
Yeah, yeah. We saw some, an increase in falls over on the acute care side. But Angie and her staff have, you know, done what they can to mitigate that and reduce that risk. Increased some rounding and we have a new consent form. We had a patient ask for all four bed rails. Well, that's a restraint. So we did create a consent form that patients now can sign saying that they asked for it as a... What's that?
That's okay with the state. They can...
If they ask for it.
That's okay.
Yes. And we can't implement it without their consent. So we never had anything. Nobody's ever really asked for it before. So just making sure that we had a signed consent showing if we ever got audited that this patient did indeed ask for the four sided bed rails and we were restraining.
Right.
And that's kind of part of the issue is that some of the patients are confused, right Angie?
Yeah.
And so it's hard to, you know, they don't recognize that they have an issue. And when they want to go, boy, they're at the bed, so.
Other than that, that's about it.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention the falls too, because we were beginning. It's great. Incidents down, matters down. Maybe most could.
They'll ask you the same question. How long do you think that number? What's your standard? What's your goal?
15. No, it's been wonderful. Quality, they're good. Amazing.
Yeah, you guys have done a great job of the quality.
And your report is quick. Your report's quick. Okay.
I think we should split.
Split up? Why?
I want to meet new people, people who need me.
Meet new people? You're my loved kidney.
You only need one of me, man. And you have two. There are plenty of people out there who are dying because they don't have one.
Really?
You'll be giving the gift of life.
I could be a hero.
Yeah. It's all win-win up here, buddy. Why don't you go and save a life, pal? You're doing the right thing.
Guys, move on to old business. Okay, Judge?
Looks like, looks like I'm on the old business. Can I toggle from strategic plan? Because I think that's gonna take a little longer and to patient care loans, because I would really like to get these considered for moving forward. Because I think it's gonna make a positive financial impact for both the community and us.
Okay, let me say one second. This was supposed to be part of the training, but we didn't have the time for this. So it's actually on the agenda at the beginning, so you don't get confused.
Yeah, and somebody voted remove the clinic instead of that.
Absolutely.
So you're gonna talk about what?
The patient care loans. Yeah. So I think we talked a little bit, or I sent you stuff about IBI. So I, I think we talked a little bit, or I sent you stuff about iVify and CareCredit. So two separate companies, so we're going to talk about both of them. Uh, and as we're going through, my, my, let's see if I can turn screen here. Because I think it's.
Just Nick, can you see the, can you see the slides?
Uh, not yet.
Okay. There's three of those, Nick, for us.
You said that.
That one.
There you go.
You should, turn screen, yeah, it's like. And then I can go back to.
Hey, Don. Oh.
Keisha?
Yeah, oh, you know, we should get Keisha in here. Even though it's.
It's a good idea. I'm sorry.
I lost, I lost the. Yeah, let's talk, let's have Keisha talk about Heritage, uh, kick us off, if that's okay.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, if you can quieten, that would be super. So I asked Keisha to be here because we're having trouble getting MRI scheduled. It's actually costing us studies. So they're having to go out of town because we don't have enough latitude with the, the current company we have, the DMS.
Correct.
DMS. So they can come half a day, once a week, four weeks a month. They do have a large force and they can handle bigger patients.
Four days a month.
Four days a month. What's that, one week? Well, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I knew what I meant.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah. Anyway, um, a company called Heritage approached us and they're willing to do the studies for less money, be here for full days, and we only have to guarantee them six studies a day for the first three months and then after that, seven. And they'll count a with and without study as two studies. And I'm going to let Keisha take over for you before I mess anything else up.
No, you're fine. He pretty much covered it. We're just losing a lot of business to other facilities. We're booked out currently until September. And then it's hard if we have a patient that needs three MRIs, we can't put, because we can only do four exams if they're all without every time that DMS is currently coming a week. So if we have a patient that has two with and withouts or, you know, multiple exams, we have to break them up, which also is hard on the patients. So that's why we're exploring this option. They'll come the night before, they'll set up the truck. Their tech will come here, stay the night at a hotel and then get up the next morning and they'll do up to twelve exams, so.
Are we paying for them their hotel or that's part of their?
So currently we're paying seven hundred and fifty, or seven hundred and thirty-five dollars per scan with DMS. Heritage is going to be four hundred and sixty-five dollars per scan.
Wow.
A with and without study will be two charges, because they consider that two exams. Um, but it's a considerable amount cheaper.
And what does the patient charge?
The.
For.
The verbal billing through us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
How many can you do a day?
Up to twelve. Um, but we have to at least book six to make it worth it. So we think that's doable. Angie came up with the idea of having DMS, basically starting out with Heritage coming every other week and continuing with DMS because they have the larger bore. It's a seventy-two centimeter bore as opposed to the sixty centimeter bore. Currently, DMS is a five-hundred-pound weight limit. Heritage is a three-hundred-and-fifty-pound weight limit. So we'd like to keep DMS on to provide, you know, services to those larger patients. So that's our idea now. If we can continue to book with Heritage, um, and we increase our, you know, usage of them, though, they would potentially, excuse me, be able to buy a new scanner just for us. So with that bigger bore.
And, and leave it here?
No, it would still be immobile, but they'd be more apt to purchase another large bore scanner, so.
And if they can provide great service, I'm talking to the CEOs around. If we get them added on, then, then they'd be way more likely to buy us a larger bore scanner as well.
And we could go up to two days a week if we wanted to.
Where are they? Out of?
Um, based out of Washington, but they had, they're starting in Saratoga. They have, I called, um, a hospital in Oregon, spoke to them about their services. They had nothing but good things to say, so. I talked to a couple of their facilities. One of them was, both of them were critical access. One was a very small VA hospital. They use them every week, full day. We still start their IDs, we supply linens, they supply contrast, which is what I'd like to start with for now, since there kind of is a contrast shortage. Um, and with us being a smaller facility, we have a hard time getting contrast as opposed to the bigger facilities. So I'd like it if they provided the contrast at least for now. So.
Is there a restriction of what could be done?
Breast. Breast MRI is one thing that they could eventually do, but breast MRI is pretty specialty because they want radiologists to be there and it kind of is very protocol-dependent. I'm working currently with Wendy and IT and everybody to get everything set up on that side to make sure our connections are correct and that we have everything that they would need for the truck. But we don't think that there's going to be any issues. We don't anticipate any issues. I reached out to Monument to get protocols. They'll run our protocols, they have no problems doing that. I'm just waiting to hear back from the tech to get them up to speed on what we would need.
So currently we're out through September, but with going with this new company, we could be within a month or a few weeks.
Exactly. And we're losing a lot of patients that have to go, unfortunately, because they need them sooner. I'd like to keep them on Thursdays because we already have DMS on Thursday, so we keep it consistent. Also, um, the thought with it is to be able to add on, say we only have seven that are scheduled. Say there's a stroke that comes into the ER or something happens with the clinic or an inpatient, we can add on a brain with, you know, brain without, fast brain MRI and do an MRI brain with and without, um, which also saves the patient time, gets a faster diagnosis than doing the head without CT here, shipping them to Monument, waiting for Monument to do the MRI.
Now, you, you've made the comment about keeping DMS. Are you planning on having two days?
We'd like to basically do Heritage bi-weekly or every other week and DMS every other week. Just to start, so we can still accommodate for our larger patients. Because when we get a patient that's broad-shouldered male, um, and it saves a shoulder MRI, it kind of presented a problem because DMS used to have the smaller bore and a three-hundred-and-fifty-pound weight limit. So we had to be really cautious about people's girth for shoulders and necks and stuff like that going into the machine.
So how, is there room out there to put?
Same size trailer.
Oh, it's the same.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be two, it just.
Okay, same size trailer.
Yes, ma'am. One point five Tesla, it's a GE scanner as opposed to the Siemens we have now. Fifty-foot trailer. So.
And the same radiologist to be reading it. The only difference would be we have a slightly different scanner and a different service line running it. Who can give us more service? DMS cannot step up their service and they're more expensive. There's, there's no latitude for them to give us any days than they're giving us right now. So we're losing opportunity.
Right.
And we asked them to increase their days four months ago. So they're double what they already are now. So we know that the need is there and we're still not meeting the need of the community.
When they bring, when, when Heritage uses their own contrast, is that absorbed into their cost? Like, do we pay separate for the DMS contrast and then is it different with them or is?
It's going to be the same, so we'll pay for.
Which is pay separate.
Yeah, it's a thirty-dollar charge for, um, the injectors themselves, the little systems that go into the double injector and then a hundred and fifty, currently pay a hundred and fifty dollars for a contrasted study. And I think it's about the same for the contrast itself with Heritage.
So it's great, so we bill the patient.
Yeah, we bill the patient. That's, that's right in the contract I verified. So they, they bill us their fees, we bill the patients, we keep the difference.
Okay, good, yeah.
So the majority of what we're doing with MRIs right now currently is with our own providers. Do we have other specialties that are?
We have a lot of other facilities, um, Casper, Rapid, we get UC Health, um, Denver hospitals, a lot of facilities around us out of state. We get stuff from Pennsylvania sometimes. So, but unfortunately, I mean, I know Dr. Emmer refers a lot of his MRIs out because he wants them done a lot sooner.
Yeah.
So we're losing business weekly with MRI. There's a lot that have to be sent out, so.
Well, maybe if we have them both run, maybe he'll squeeze in here.
Hopefully. Well, and if we're staying caught up, you know.
Sure.
Right now, today we did five exams, we were able to squeeze in five. But there's one day, I think we had last week, we could only do three because one of the exams was, it was abdomen with and without, and that's like an hour and a half of scan time. And the driver just can't, with their route that they do, he can't be on the road longer. So they're only here from four PM to six PM pretty much, yeah.
So is this an action that we need to vote on or you just let this know?
So I don't know if you need to vote or not. I wanted to bring it to you to make sure if you did, it was taken care of when we got through. I didn't want anybody telling me I'm going rogue or anything like that.
No, I, I think.
Well, I make a motion.
We.
If we need one, then we're able to use a second facility, that sounds awesome.
I do too.
Let's just vote on it. Can I have a second?
Okay, yeah, I'll second it.
All favor.
All right.
Opposed. Approve.
Thank you.
I get that slide as a warning after you one last time.
Okay. For all three of you.
Thank you, they really appreciate it.
Yeah, no, you're fine. Next time you say go. You're fine. Thank you.
Nick, can you see the patient care loan thing right now?
Yes, I can.
Woo-hoo! I love it. Actually, I'll just leave it as a vote because then I don't have to worry about five in between there for too much stuff. So like, like I said, we're talking about doing CareCredit and iVify. So here's some of the issues we have going on. Medical care is expensive, it's only getting more expensive. Inflation's not helping us. Co-pays are getting more substantial. Um, we currently have seven million dollars out of collections since two thousand seventeen. Of that total, we've only collected eighteen percent, um, or sixteen percent as it says there. And thirty-three percent is out actually from out-of-state people. And twenty-five percent of that is greater than a hundred and eighty years old. So as things stand, I, right now, we're in a hard time getting there. But we have the opportunity to get these loans. And just real quick for refresher, there's recourse loans and non-recourse loans. So recourse loans, they come back from the hospital for unpaid money. So when the patient gets the loan, they stop paying. The company that gave the patient the loan says, hey, hospital, you owe us this money back that your patient didn't pay. None.
This is.
No, this is, this is like if you get the loan from the bank, like we were talking about before. We are non-recourse on both of these. The money stays with the hospital even if the patient stops paying. They never come back after us for any, a dime.
Abidify?
Abidify and CareCredit both.
Oh, and CareCredit both?
Yeah. So let's. So Abidify, CareCredit, both non-recourse. Um, I just threw a quick slide, I don't know what to judge them by, I'm just going to talk through that. I don't want my, 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 my time. Um, so CareCredit. They have financed a hundred and nineteen billion since the company started. They started out in dentistry, they branched out into veterinary care, a couple other places, aesthetics. They've only been in regular medical care for about four years. Um, they have twelve point seven million cardholders nationwide. They have two hundred and sixty thousand providers. Um, and there are cardholders already present in Weston County, about a total of, I think, a hundred and twenty here with another three hundred and some in the surrounding communities. If payment is made, and we're talking about this interest-free zone, if it's not made in that interest-free zone, all the prior interest becomes part of the principal. So they keep track of the interest all the way up until it's paid off. So like, so let's say we had somebody at this twelve-month mark with a two-thousand-dollar bill and they don't get it paid for entirely. They owe that nine point nine percent interest from day one on, on thirteen. And it becomes part of their principal. Now, they don't have to pay the whole thing off, but they got to make payments on that. It becomes part of the principal they're paying for. They have a couple different tiers here. You get to pick, you have some choice over this. If you're doing big things, it's twenty percent interest, it'll do that up to sixty months. They don't charge, no, they, they do charge us something. I'm trying to remember now. Forgive me if I'm a rate fart. Oh, they charge us, they charge us this bottom line. So they would charge us ten percent, nine percent, these various percentages. This is what comes out of our part and they take that right away before any money comes to us. But again, non-recourse, once they pay us, it's ours. iVify, so this is the one we had a meeting about before. It's zero percent interest, thirty-six months loan to the patient. They're going to, they're offering to take thirty-seven point two from us. That is slightly negotiable, but at that rate, this, this percent cut they take off the top. So say it's a thousand-dollar loan, they take three hundred and seventy-two dollars. They are expecting between ten and fourteen percent default rate. So the way we work out on top of this is making sure, as much as we have control, that they get patients that occasionally default, not to sound mean, but the way them taking three hundred and seventy-two dollars out of three thousand for us and we get money back is if some of those patients they have actually default, would it never pay us a dime?
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. They never send a patient to bankruptcy, CareCredit will. Uh, they do not run hard credit checks. CareCredit does. CareCredit, it's a regular credit card with a hard credit check, they'll send you to collections. They said they try not to, but CareCredit was a little cagey about those answers. For CareCredit, because it's a regular credit check, they determine whether or not you get the card or not. iVify, you need to be eighteen years old and make twenty-four thousand dollars a year to be considered. And they do not, like I said, they don't run any credit checks. So they, they're trying to get people funded. They, they have an app, just like CareCredit does, so you can fund them immediately. And they will take loans for patients who have already received care. So we can retro some of that seven million dollars that's out in collections right now over to CareCredit and hopefully get paid on it. I mean, I'm sorry, iVify, yeah.
Okay.
So iVify, um, I don't remember there being any limit on how far back we could go. I had Sandy and the team talk with our, our, um, collections agency. There's no charge for us to get those claims back. They say they're our claims. So I think there's a good chance if we go, I, I almost feel like I ought to go with both of them, but especially iVify, we go with them, we have a good chance of getting a pretty decent payoff right off the bat and some money in the bank when we need it.
They take thirty-seven percent right off the top.
Thirty-seven percent off the top.
One, two.
No.
That seems a lot.
That's what I said.
It, it does seem a lot, but that's ten percent to fourteen percent default rate they're expecting.
Yeah.
So.
So in other words, if they, if the patients never pay, we keep our money and they don't send them to bankruptcy. Where the Care, where CareCredit does.
Yeah.
So.
Right, so where's the? Maybe that's what, I'm trying to figure it out. Sandy, Matt, where's the incentive for people?
Because they work with them to make the payments and, and try their best to actually get them through it.
And they have no interest.
Yeah, it's no interest to the patients. So they try and make it as far as possible. They actually put our name on the bills so that they remind the patient that they're actually paying us back essentially.
Who does that?
Uh, iVify, yeah. So to try and keep the patients in the game. And they sound as nice as you can sound being a banker. Um, and part of that is, so the way the thirty-seven point two percent work is, so they say they give us a thousand, they, they fund us the full thousand, two days later, they take the three seventy-two back. And then the patient pays the loan for the thousand. They don't pay the loan on the sixty, whatever, because that's part of the money. But iVify will actually get then like sixty, seventy, seventy-four point four percent total, if you think about it, But Abidify will actually get then like sixty, seventy, seventy-four point four percent total, if you think about it. Because they get paid an extra three hundred and some dollars they didn't actually loan, because they got that money back right away, and they got that money from us. So, I mean, it works out well for them. It works out well for the patients. I think it's gonna work out well for us.
I accept that.
One thing, the other incentive is, is there is no credit check, but the other guys have them.
So some people may not qualify for the other.
Right, right.
So how do you mean you'd like to be both, but I don't get it?
I, I, so we, neither one of them is, is spooky. So we can actually sign up with both of them and give patients a choice, which to me is always my end goal, is to give patients opportunity to do different things. They both have some pros and cons. If, if you're well enough off to pass the credit check and be able to afford to deal with Care Credit. I, I think if you're a little less well-off, I think Abidify, the zero percent for thirty-six months, that's a great way to go. Takes good care of you, and they're not gonna send you to collections. So.
Did you have a question there? Sorry, it was important, one of the roses.
I'm sorry.
So you'd only, they, you'd only, we'd only pay anything, I'm sorry, we would only be charged if somebody actually took out a loan?
Correct.
Right, there's no like a fee, and that's what I'm saying, everything is a fee, so that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, yeah, there's no upfront fee. There's no, there's no detriment to us signing with either of them. They'll actually train our staff on how to help promote their products. Abidify will actually advertise in the community. So that is one thing. The, the unexpected or unintentional effect of that will be, some people who are self-paying and just pay us right off the bat are gonna get a zero percent loan for thirty-six months. And, and so we would lose a little money there. And, and not, so not able to think that those people wouldn't do that. Because I would do that if I had a choice, right? But I think overall, that more than work out in the law should be able to offer it to more people. Get that seven million dollars and part of that out of collections and not have to send anybody collections again. I mean, it just breaks my heart. It's bad enough you came to the hospital for probably the worst day of your life. And then, hey, three months later, we're sending you collections for the worst day of your life. It doesn't even like you got to go to Vegas on a bender, man. You just got homes.
And our self-paid.
Conscious choice.
Our self-paid just keeps turning up and up and up. You know, I mean, there's more and more people not able to, or I have insurance.
Or, or they don't, or they're just not willing to pay.
Well, I mean, that's.
That could be too, you know.
There is.
And the, the service, you know, I'm coming to get a service, but not.
So what if someone doesn't want either one of these, but wants to take, make payments to the hospital?
That's totally cool. We have a self-papers and Donna, she's able to do that. I just wanna be able to offer other programs for patients to have as something to pick from. And then we have a sliding scale too for the clinic that I, I sent out to you all earlier that I think we could just move on with. And then, you know, if you're, if you're under a percent of the poverty line, you're paying fifteen bucks to build the clinic if you're, you're done. And everything else under two hundred percent of the poverty line is prorated down. So clinic visits are gonna be well taken care of, and then we can use this stuff for on our side. And, and then people that need an MRI, that couldn't afford it otherwise, can get an MRI now. And, and so the provider side of me says, man, that'd be fantastic. Because so often you have somebody that really needs an MRI to find out what's going on, and they just can't afford it. But they, they have, they have a job, and they're making enough money, they could shoot fifty bucks your way a month. But shoving out thirty-five hundred to five grand, that just isn't gonna happen.
So, so if you get an MRI, do you sit down with somebody before you leave or something to like say, hey, this is what we can do, like this one year?
Okay? Yes.
Consultational.
Right.
Like, oh, okay.
Yeah, so both of these you can do before you occur to any bills. And, and like I said, Abidify is, is retro. So let's say somebody came through and, you know, they got hurt in a car accident, and they thought they had insurance, and then they found out later on they don't. They can go back to Abidify and get financed.
Okay. Does somebody have to contact them?
Yeah, but, yeah, it's, it's, it's app on your phone. They, they swear it's two-minute kind of thing.
It's an app, it's an app thing, and so is.
Care Credit, yeah, they're both.
Both apps.
Both saying it's a couple minutes to prove. And then the other thing is, you have to be signed up with them as a facility to use their services. So we get the service signed up here, somebody can't get an Abidify loan through, through our service line and go like go to Sundance and get care on Abidify.
Right.
Could you with the other?
You know, I didn't ask that, because they were already established here. I, I took it that they could, but I, I did not ask the clarifying question, so I own, I'll own that. But because they're already here with dental cards and other cards, I, I just assumed that it was, you can roll with it wherever you wanted to go. As long as they accept a care credit. So the one hundred and twenty people that are already in Weston County, the way I understood it, could use their cards here tomorrow if we signed up with them.
So one thing with this deck that we have in the business office today, do we have somebody that can take the time to be able to be the marker for this?
Yes.
They already do. I mean, the registration people are already knew. Perfect. I mean, because they, I mean, if people, if they, when they're registering for a CT or an MRI or, and they notice that either they don't have insurance or they're asking for the cost of those exams, they talk to them about the financial assistance thing, or they talk to them about a payment plan already. This would just be something they would add to that as options for the patient. They already talked to them about those things. Same with the clinic staff. They do that too, with self-paid patients especially.
It's good for, for very, you know. But that's what I was gonna say, was that just, it's nice, the choices. And it's just really nice to be able to choose.
Yeah, especially when it doesn't cost us anything upfront. If somebody utilizes, then we get charged, but we're probably getting paid more than we were gonna get paid anyway. Looking at the data that I have available to me. So I was, I wanted to bring it to you to see what you would say, see if we could move forward with this, or.
Do we, will we just turn?
I think we oughta vote on this. Sorry. I'm gonna make y'all work.
Does anybody have any more questions before we vote?
And there's a, you can get out.
Yep, there's, there's, there's.
By contract or anything.
Yep, we have to sign an agreement.
How long?
How long?
It's a year, but it has outs.
Oh, does it?
Yeah.
Both of them do that.
Because I'm always looking for outs.
The thing is, in your time, you won't really know how it's working unless, without sticking to every year.
Well.
Yeah, unless there's some drastic problem, right?
That's my thing.
And can't we assign somebody to the seven million back to contact the people?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's important.
Because that, that being a great job for Donna, she's working through self-pays, to be able to reach out. She's already self-papers for everybody who doesn't know, to be able to reach back out to those people. Like just for twenty twenty-three, we have five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars out in collections, which we've gotten, I think, eleven thousand and thirteen thousand back total.
But peanuts.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So they're really letting us down.
And we're paying them, so we're paying them, we're not getting anything back.
Really, yeah. It's a better way.
I make a motion that we move forward with the Abidify.
Please, may I have a second?
I got it.
And then doing the. Do we need to include on that?
Both of them?
Not doing the other thing?
Well, aren't you doing all this again?
Did you want to do both?
Getting, that we only got eleven thousand back from.
Oh, to, to get rid of the collections agency?
Yes. Do we need to include that in the motion?
Well, don't we need to keep that for the people that won't do this?
So I think we keep it in the background, because we only pay when we utilize them. And, and they do have all the way back to two thousand seventeen, so we don't necessarily wanna cancel that. There's a chance we can get some money out of them still, if, if some of those can't come back.
Would you want to include both?
Well, that's up to you guys. I, I.
I thought we already had it.
Yeah, I did too, when you said it.
That's what you said.
No, there's people in town with cards, but we don't actually already have them. We don't have a contract with them.
Oh, I misinterpreted, and that's why I only said the one, like you said, we were adding.
Do you want to do both?
Yep, I will amend it that we include both.
Thank you. And you second it?
I second it, yeah.
And any favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's approved. Go for it.
Thank you. Sorry for making y'all do so much today. No. Uh.
Do you have a health transport?
So there's, there's actually an article in the paper about that. Ange?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I just read an article in the paper that the county is gonna send that out to bid now. So I haven't had any communication with them, so I'm not really sure what the plan was, so I'm probably gonna reach out.
What I was told is, is that the, the head of the board wanted to make it fair.
Right.
Put it on.
It's for a call.
But for right now, we, all we have is done.
Okay, so we're still sticking to that.
The, the paper makes it sound like we don't have no.
Yeah, but we do.
Okay, so we do.
Yeah, we have the, I'm contracted with, with the sheriff's department.
Correct.
Filed with the commissioners, and we're good to go. All you do is call the sheriff.
Okay.
And he'll take care of it.
And if we have any, we talked about this the other day, if there's anybody else that wants to do this.
Yeah.
Then we need to make sure that they have credentials and the.
Of course.
They wear the equipment and all that stuff, so.
Okay.
If you hear anything about it, just.
No, I just read what I read in the paper, and it was a little confusing.
I saw that.
Yeah, because it was different than we talked about, that's why I was.
Oh, today another one? See that one today, Ange? I saw the posting last week.
I saw it, I haven't read it yet.
No, it was just today. I just saw it, so.
Okay.
Okay, good.
All right, strategic plan. How do you all wanna attack this? Because it's, it's getting to be a pretty long document. Uh, how about I hit highlights of changes, if that's okay? I tried to put the, the sections in bold, just to make it easier to read through. I added a little more to training, because during our SWOT analysis, so that we did with department heads and people that wanted to come from the hospital to, to talk.
I want the SWOT step.
Uh, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats.
Yep. I just wanted to.
That's the strike one you used.
That's, that's the strike one, never mind.
Yeah.
Wrong answer.
So anyway, education and the ability to advance within the company were one of the big things that came out on a regular basis, of which I'm a humongous fan. Because I think for us to be the care center that the community needs, our providers need to be able to do the procedures they need to do. Our billing team needs to know the most up-to-date stuff. Our credentialing team needs to know the most up-to-date stuff on HIPAA, like down the line, throughout everything. And, and even speaking to Ron, our, our maintenance manager, they need some training on electrician stuff. So I, I'm gonna push hard to get as much of that education done as cheaply as possible. But I, I think it's gonna be pertinent for us to spend that money wisely, but spend it, to get that done. Financial stability, three forty B getting that run in, and costs covered by operating revenue, I mean, as I've been pushing all along. Talked about the loans, growth. Expanded hours in Newcastle, and they had also mentioned ENT, G.I., P's and podiatry's being service lines, they felt like were probable additions along with hospice services. And, and actually, just so you know, we're in preliminary talks with Lacy Hospice, their new hospice company out of Gillette. Their medical director is Bob Newark. I know him personally and as a professional. He's a great human being and a wonderful provider.
Is that out of Campbell County?
Yeah, so it'd be out of Campbell County. It's different than.
Hospital, Campbell County Hospital?
Yeah.
No, it's healing hearts, home health.
It's healing hearts, home health. So it's a standalone?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't, I thought that Campbell County has in physical location. Sorry, my bad.
I just, you say that.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Anyway, so that is on the docket. And then goals, I didn't think it changed anything since last time we talked. Underneath that, staff. What I did, the, the big thing that I did was I added a preliminary mission, vision and values. And thinking through all of our strategy, just like we talked about. I was trying to encompass that, and, and this is just meant to be a starting point for conversation. If you love it, great. If you don't love it, that's fine, or if you hate it, that's fine too. Both work, it's meant to be. But mission is provide care for the ill, compassion for the broken, healing for the spirit and hope for where there would be done. Because as a healthcare facility, I think that's really our mission, right, is to take care of the people that need us. And, and that's what I took from the SWOT, that's what I took from our strategy was that embodied. And their vision would be to be the first choice in care in Weston County and the surrounding areas, while being a location sought after to work and provide care throughout the nation. Meaning that providers and everybody else would wanna work here, because it's such a great place to work.
I wonder about the coordination. I'm gonna get a woman.
Well, so in the, in the land of physicians, like really even nationwide, that pool is small, so that's why I put nation.
Yeah, I just wondered, because it was like, whoa.
Well, it's ambitious, so there you go.
Yeah, well, that's, that's kinda me. I don't, I don't roll small bird out. And then, and then values, again, going back to the mission, vision and, and our, our, our plan that we're working through, was caring, integrity, compassion. And I guess, let me, let me, let me slow down. So caring, the right care at the right time, every time. Integrity is everyone treated as equals and fairly. Compassion, patients, coworkers, community, treat with kindness every time. There are some people that are really good about taking care of patients and sometimes forget their coworkers need love too. And love in a very platonic, non-HR way. Spirit is.
And just caring for them in general.
Yeah, just caring in general. So.
Sorry.
Spirit, I'm a spiritual guy, but I, I was trying to find a way to word that, because it is important to take care of the spirit, just like I said. And it's honoring the complexity of human existence, is kinda what I thought really rang true of that. And then, and then light, and that's just bringing hope wherever possible and walking with each other through tough times.
Yep, I like it.
I do too.
Comments? Are you seeing judges?
Yeah, that, that's it. I don't have anything more in there. And, and it's a long document, and we can spend all night talking through every single thing, but we talked it through the last time, and I didn't wanna belabor it.
I love the vision. I think that's, you're, you're making a statement that this is where people wanna come to, and that's not always the case when you hear. And I mean, that's it, if you have to first say, state it, if you wanna actually move in that direction, so I think it's great, the vision's.
I really like the mission. I think that's a good, that's where we should be at the hospital.
Walter, what do you think, sir?
I'm supposed to keep my opinion to myself.
You're a community member in the.
This, this though. That mission statement, it, like you, I'm a very spiritual being. With my total reliance on God, on Yahweh. And everything you have there to me speaks of a reliance on that. Without coming out and insulting people, saying, we believe in God and we're gonna push that on you, none of that is there. But the values are the values that are, I see in the Bible, so that I appreciate.
Thank you.
I'm probably in trouble with my editor now.
Well, I really appreciate that a lot.
Edit that part now.
I, I think that was a really insightful comment, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
As an individual from the community.
Yeah, as an individual from the community.
Not as a recorder, an individual.
I'm just videoing it, and then I put it together.
There you go.
Alexis watches and reports.
It looks like we agree on.
We were reading Hamilton.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
Awesome. So I, I don't expect to vote on this, because it's a pretty big document or anything like that. I think y'all oughta chew on it for a little bit, and I.
Bring it up next month.
Bring it up next month for a formal vote. But I think I'm done adding to this. I, I think you've had listened to me talk about it long enough.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes, sir.
Would you be able to send me a PDF of that?
Sure would.
I'll get my contact after the meeting.
Yep, please do. I, I can send you copies of everything that's public. I wanna be as transferred as possible.
Judd and I have it too. I have his contact information that he gives.
All right, perfect. Yeah, and if ever you wanna interview me for anything separately, just to talk about how things are going, I'm, I'm all game all the time.
How did you feel your SWOT meeting with the staff? Were they, were they pretty frank or at least candid to some of the questions?
Yeah, I actually still have the forms hanging up on my wall. If you wanna look, I saved them.
Okay.
To, to reference back to, but especially for the first like forty-five minutes, when you say Piper, they were pretty engaged. I did it at lunchtime, and I was like, crap, because they started fading. I shouldn't have.
And he didn't feed us. He didn't bring snacks or anything.
Yeah, I was a bad leader, right? Yeah, next time, there'll be pizza and pop.
And points. There'll be points. Good idea, Mike.
Well, maybe we can make the four-out points, Steve. Okay. So I think that takes care of the big things. We got Fee Trail, which is our new, we talked about that already.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add to the Fee Trail thing, is that Kim was actually able to show it to us the other day, and it's a shame we didn't have it here today, but it is amazing. Because it's, it's a survey and has five questions. If you, if you answer four or more, then it's a positive thing. If you answer less than four, they ask you more questions to see why, because it's going down the hill. Yeah, versus ser, patient survey, right. And if, if you, if it's really bad, they notify us right away, and if it's really great, they notify us.
So this is a different company than what we've been using?
So Survey.
The same one that Kim was talking about, right?
Yeah, yes, this is, yeah. So Survey Solutions are a historic one. Started out charging us sixty-five hundred bucks in twenty twenty-one, I think it was. They wanted to charge us seventeen thousand this year. I told them.
Oh, thank you. Good decision.
Yeah, and it wasn't very good service. We're hopeful this new trail will be much better.
What about the Epic one, though? That they, Epic sends out a survey as well. Is that in addition?
No, so Epic doesn't send out a survey. It's.
It's an issue.
Yeah, so this is the one that'll replace. You'll get a text on your phone, and instead of it happening ten days later, whatever, it'll happen almost immediately as you're walking out the door.
Okay.
So that, that.
There's no justification.
Right, so this is, that, so that was one of the things we liked about it, is it happens almost instantaneously. So as you're leaving the building from having your lab drawn or having your x-ray, you'll be getting the text. And then it has, or, or the clinic, it has pictures of the providers. So if you had a clinic visit, it has a picture of the provider at your stop. It's, the survey is colorful and it's not just blah.
Right, visual.
Yeah, it's, it's just a lot more visually appealing than the previous surveys, and it's short. If you answer fours and aboves, if you have concerns or complaints, then ask additional questions. And then you can ask, if you can either, you know, recognize specific staff, you can put that in there, you can ask for Kim to reach out to you if you had a concern immediately. And Kim will get notified immediately.
They should get the results quickly.
Yeah.
What does this cost?
It costs ten grand for the year.
Ten grand for the year.
Yeah. I negotiated them down to fifteen.
Good job.
So they weren't a lot less than the other company?[1750.62]
No, but the service seems to be way better, and, and Kimball Hospital is using it as part of the reason I reached out to them and they seem to be very pleased with the service they're getting from them.
Yeah. So who's tracking this, I mean, to show that we're, I mean, because with the others, isn't anybody tracking that? I mean, as far as, how many, how many do we get back and?
Give us, give us.
Percentage is.
What is it?
Minimal.
Yeah, it's not very good right now.
It's minimal, I don't remember the numbers, but this survey, people are going to want to click the buttons.
Okay.
It's like Lego instruction.
So when she does her quality reports, I mean, when she goes over those quality things, it should say in there how many surveys were sent out, how many responded.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
They have ties, percentages.
Yeah, and so it, it'll have the same types of reports, Kim will make the same types of reports.
Now, another question is, is, uh, if they don't answer the first time, the other ones that did it again, like a week later or a few days?
Yes, this one does, yeah.
Yeah, it'll do it as many times as we want, we only want it to do one more time, but they'll do it indefinitely, which is kind of ridiculous.
Yeah, she gets to set how many times it, how many times they don't respond.
Okay, and this is through texting?
Yes.
Okay.
For outpatient stuff, for lab, x-rays, for physical therapy, clinic, for outpatient stuff.
So do we, once again, do we need to vote for this then?
No, this, this is a done thing, we're just letting you know, we're replacing one service with another, so when you hear about it in the community, hopefully it's good, you know why.
Okay.
And we're, the H cap surveys, we're probably going to bring in-house because we're still struggling to find somebody that's willing to do it. I tried to negotiate with Survey Solutions to keep doing those because they did an okay job with that. They haven't gotten back to me after two weeks, so we'll, we'll be looking to bring those in-house or find someone that's willing to do them cheaper. Because really, that's just a mail survey that Medicare mandates goes out and it doesn't help us at all.
No, I know.
Well, ours can't be in-house for regulations, it has to be outside. We had a really good one before, so.
Well, Survey Solutions was going to stop doing the home health one anyway, so they weren't even going to carry that. They said they did a trial and then they weren't sure they were going to keep doing it.
Did you say you had one before? That was very good, yeah. Gita, who was it, Data?
Will you, will you send me a contact or a reminder of that?
Data, D A T A.
D E Y T A.
D E Y T A.
Perfect, thanks, Carmen.
And they were very good.
All right, next, pain management, are we ready to go to the next one?
Yes, sir.
All right, just keep it rolling, so pain management, we've been talking to pain management and addiction specialists to try and make sure that we can provide that service in the community and so in which it perform via telemedicine. These people are out of Colorado, they work in Lyman and Denver right now. Um, and speaking with the providers and speaking kind of with the team, it may be that we just bring them on to kind of educate our providers up and use them more in a consulting role. Their educate, their addiction medicine though is pretty intriguing because they'll do alcohol and drug, so having them in the community may be a benefit. I've started talking to the Sundance CEO, Mickey, the CSG wants to be part of it, because if we combine, then it's probably going to be pretty affordable and it's going to be more worth it for that company. So we're still talking through what this looks like and trying to get to where it's something to bring before you for an actual decision, I'm just letting you know about it. Um, there is also maybe an opportunity to bring an anesthesiologist out to do actual injections, but I'd have to make sure ducks in a row on the acute side before we do something like that. Because we have to have proper recovery and stuff like that, I don't want to give an ulcer, tell them we're going to bring a pain manager to talk to. But.
So this is telemed?
Yeah, so telemed and then the anesthesiologist to be in person, and the pain management addiction people are willing to come in person, they are. Um, if that's what needs to happen, we just have to work out the financial details behind it, they want us to do the billing, they want us to just pay them a fee, so.
But then you want to educate providers right now?
Yeah, the addiction medicine may be more involved than that, the pain management side, because they do a lot of Suboxone, which is now open, you don't have to take all the classes to do. Um, they want to talk through like some of those options with our providers because our, our team doesn't do that yet.
So is there, does it seem like there's a need for all this? Big time.
We have patients in home health going out of town, trying to find someone to work with.
And they will do narcotic prescriptions, so if we do the full thing with them, they will do narcotic prescriptions as well.
But the doctors are kind of limited to be able to do that.
Yep.
Which means people have pain, which is not good.
Yeah, but being addicted to narcotics isn't good either.
If you're death and dying.
And your pain.
It's not unbearable.
Well, give them another avenue besides having them in their office and.
Yeah.
You know, it's a different avenue.
Or buying it off the street.
Or buy it straight the option.
Exactly, yeah. The worst feeling from a patient.
So, a- again, just trying to get choices in the community to provide good care, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to work through, right? Um, website wise, Denise and Wendy have been knocking out of the park in our new website up and running, it's not ready for prime time yet, but I think you're going to find it way more usable. Um, and, uh, it's going to be great. Uh, newspaper ad wise, this will make Walter happy, we signed up for additional ads with the online version of the paper, um, because it has a lot of reach. I spent some time talking with Bob, and, and just so you know, website wise, Bob agreed since we had a healthcare specific person to go with them. But we talked through to using him for ads because there's a lot of opportunity there. Um, one thing I'm going to toggle because we get to change those ads weekly, is I want to be able to highlight students in the community. Kindergarten through twelfth grade, who've done great things in athletic, intellect, community. Um, I'm working on a Stride Award, I put my own money, two hundred and fifty bucks of my own money on this to award at the end of the year for whoever does the best. I would like the board to think about piggybacking on and making maybe an additional two hundred and fifty or whatever you guys think is appropriate award, maybe for another A section. Because this is going to include Upton and Newcastle, maybe you guys cover Upton and I cover Newcastle, I might go to the foundation to see if they'll throw some money in too. Um, it, it's going to be based on community service and sportsmanship rather than did you win the game? It's going to be, you help somebody around that broke their leg for a home run, you know, those kind of things. And it's, anybody in the community can nominate people and then we're going to have a selection committee to pick who wins at the end of the year. Um, and work through that selection committee as the year goes on and figure out who needs to be on it.
So these ads aren't, aren't ads for like, what are they, are they public service ads?
So we're, we're, we're just going to, we're going to use our own ads, we're going to advertise our pharmacy, we're going to advertise new service lines. But as some of these kids come through who are like, who did astounding stuff, I want to recognize them in the paper on our dime. Because I think that's the right thing to do to convey to the community our heart.
It is called a Stride Award?
Stride, so it's.
S R I D E.
Do you have my paper, just so I don't get it wrong?
Down here somewhere, oh no, she took it back.
No, that's the one I had.
Yeah, the one, the one you wrote because I've talked about so many things, so it's students, teamwork, reach out, intellect, victory and excellence. And so. We're, um, Denise and Shanae and I worked on this one morning because we wanted, we wanted to be able to utilize ads and then kind of out of that, we decided, heck, we should award some of these kids something because. That'll help them nominate people for one, and we just wanted to be able to recognize people in the community for the stuff they're doing.
So where's the newsletter journals, um, client base, I mean, do you know, remember?
So I think Bob told me and Walter can maybe help me, but like over a hundred thousand people around, a hundred thousand hits, something like that?
On the website, we're tearing it up. Any other newspaper that is even double our size and stuff like that online, they're just not coming close. Really.
I mean, even Alan's mom, Alan's mom, she's eighty-nine, she's the only one was on the newsletter journal website, really?
And it, it's just getting hits like crazy, people see stuff that are there.
It goes out every Monday.
It, it, the nuke now goes out every Monday. Um, our website, it gets changed sometimes daily. Um, we've got our YouTube page is really coming up and it's absolutely hitting it out of the ballpark now, so.
Okay, it's good to know, I never, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, and speaking with Bob, it was amazing the reach and that's why it made good sense for us to, to partner up with them. It's, it's a hundred dollars a week, we got to pay them for the ads, but I think that's money well spent. And it's a limited number of people that get those spots, so we got the last one, just so you know.
And the website has no bugs that I've seen and I'm on it almost every day. It just boom, 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 people, they don't get stuck in one page and get frustrated and get off.
Digitalized specifically, digitalized.
One thing, I said it and I'll say it again, one thing that I, I find is that people are not aware that if they have a specialist out of town, that they can use our services here because they feel pressured to use what they're. So I really think that needs to be part of our advertising.
I like it.
Right, because we talked about that, when we did his meet and greets at the senior center, I talked about that with the seniors and you know what happens? The doctor says that you need to have.
You go lab, you need to walk down the hall, yeah.
Right, there's not even a discussion and they don't know how to ask.
And I really think we need to emphasize that.
I agree.
You don't have to drive, well, physical therapy, some people don't then realize you don't have to drive to Rapid City three times a week because we have it here.
Yeah.
Who would do that, I know. So anyway, I think we ought to hit that.
People that, that see their doctors as the be all, end all.
Yeah.
Well, and doctors are top scripting wise, because the institutions want to keep the revenue delayed.
The same, we, we want to do the same thing, because we want our doctors and.
Exactly, we, we can't blame them for doing the same thing, we just got to be better at it.
That's right.
Well, it's about awareness, honestly, I think it's, it's truly about awareness.
They need to have the okay to say, can I have this done at my hospital? Because most of the time the doctor's.
Well, they have, they actually have to legally, they have to.
Yeah, they do, but they don't know to ask.
Is there any mechanism to, um, do like public service ads for, um, recognition of some of our docs?
We can, we can do whatever we want.
Like introduction of our docs, like we have a couple new docs and nobody knows who they are or what we are, you know?
You can put together a video if that's what you prefer, I can put that on anything.
Really?
Really. I've got two that I'm putting on this, I've got a still ad that'll be put on this with just a little background music for thirty seconds, that type of thing, that I just received today. But I, I already have two or three videos and, uh, they, they've gone on your guys' meetings, um, when I put that together.
We could go further than that even, do providers and do, this is our ER staff, these are our team.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We're, we're going to hit all kinds of people, we're going to put employee spotlights, we're, we're going to try and make sure that every week we're changing our ads up so that we're getting the bang for our buck and the community's getting what they need from us. I want our ads to be something people want to look at, not that it's in their way to get to what they want to see.
Do we go to the Gazette?
Yeah, I was going to say.
It gets a lot of readership, I mean, I.
We do advertise that the Gazette, but I don't, I don't remember.
I mean, I can speak with somebody there too and like to say, hey, this is an opportunity.
Yeah.
Do they do web stuff, you know?
They don't, and that's what I was just alluding to, because you said digital ads, that's why I asked that, because I'm like, they don't do any of that yet.
Yeah, Gazette is a good.
I mean, it's just another, it's just another paper, it's just another opportunity to.
Walter, pluck your ears, but we do advertise it.
Sorry, sorry.
Denise comes back, we can.
It's Weston County, it's not, you know, I mean.
I stomp him out of here in a huff.
Denise, we advertise the Gazette at Upton, right?
We do, yes, we try to advertise everything you can.
Well, it makes sense because they're part of the community, really.
Yeah, totally.
And Upton has a huge readership of the, of the Gazette.
I didn't even know that until I, you know, until we moved there and I was like, wow, I read it.
And that's what target area, we really need to target Upton to come back.
All right, I mean, especially if you're trying to get people into the clinic and that's.
All right, one last thing in our whole business, can I have a vote to move the clinic over here so the clinic gets started on having all this stuff, please?
Yep, can I have a motion to move the Newcastle clinic across to the hospital?
Also move.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
In our favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is so approved.
Anything else?
I love that line, we have no, we don't know what we're going to do with the building, we don't have a plan for that at this point.
No.
So it does make me nervous, I feel like we're going past, but that might, I mean, it sounds good.
Well, we don't have to decide to do anything with the building until everybody's happy and hunky-doky over here.
Well, no, 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 I don't mean that. It sounds good, yeah, it does.
It, well, so as far as shifting gears, is that, is that what you're talking about?
Well, I, the only thing that worries me, it honestly does, is a worry to me that people will just feel like the clinic is gone. And that they will realize that it's to the hospital. We have to remodel, so we have lots of time to let people know, you know, signs and.
Yeah, and move an urgent care over here first helps us have time.
Which that will help, yeah.
That will help because that will be an opening.
See, I think people like it.
I'm, I'm sure they will, I'm sure they will.
It's a celebration, it's like. It's just the change and change is good. And. Oh, that's not a reason.
Yeah, we love change.
Right, man.
Sure.
And we can have a grand opening with the balloons and the board and everybody here and have refreshments and come see our.
It's going to take a while anyway, it's not like we could say, oh, move it tomorrow, the walls will.
Well, yeah, urgent care wise, it could be tomorrow, as long as the number's taken care of, but the rest of it is going to take a bit.
Yeah. And that, that, that is to me the only drawback, I, I really think it sounds good, but it does.
Hey, and think about the hometown move from the shopping center to Main, over to Main Street.
It bothered a bit.
Right.
And it's prettier than it was, and we're going to be prettier.
Oh, yeah.
And we'll have more balloons.
And you won't be able to hear through the wall.
And the convenience, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, you can hear, I know.
When you walk in that building, it's just the whole place shakes.
We're utilizing our space here.
Right, that's what I think is great.
No.
About using this whole, okay, girls. Girl, let's move on, sorry, great, great, thank you.
Can we vote on bucket list next, since it's under new business?
Bucket lists.
That employee recognition.
Points.
The points.
Points, got it.
Oh, bucket list.
Okay, can I have a motion to?
I don't know what it is.
Oh, that's the one you came up with. Motion for to approve bucket list to, uh.
I'm tired of doing this.
Also move.
Okay, Nick, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved.
Go with it.
We'll make it a tire.
Sorry, I told you guys, I'm where you guys are, I'm sorry.
Go.
Uh, so request for the Democratic Convention from DEP to have, uh, projects here at the hospital. So we spoke with legal and there is some liability concerns if we have somebody from outside work here. Um, I even tossed around briefly the idea in my head of having them like work with the man or residents, but we have to have background checks on everybody, so that's really not applicable. As much as I wanted to help them, be able to help us, because that, that'd be awesome, right? Like free work is every CEO's dream, but like I can't make it happen with that being safe and, okay, so we have to tell them no.
Do anything outside?
They, they wanted to do outside, they wanted to do outside work, but the liability concerns from Allison were still significant. So like if, whatever would fall and get hurt or have a heart attack doing it, then it's on us, yeah.
So the challenges are good and, and Judd was very grateful.
Yeah, I mean, I was so appreciative that you even thought of us.
What about the suggestion that they do a project on their own, like a gift bag or whatever that could be given?
Oh, I think a gift bag would be fine, I don't see any problem with that.
And that's what, they want to do something and, and maybe that's the way to go, something that's given to patients, a care, something, whatever.
Which people are doing that sort of stuff all the time, you know?
Yeah, it's a service, doesn't it?
The church, the church.
Churches and so forth, you know?
Yeah, something like that would be great, that's a good idea, I'll get back to DEP with that, that's my idea.
Yeah, Cookie Day, Cupcake Day, something.
Can we do that in Wyoming?
I think we can, right, you don't need to be certified by the health inspector.
I don't know.
Well, that might be.
Well, in general.
Balloon, how about a balloon day?
And latex allergies.
You see, you need allergies with your gift bag.
Okay.
Are you good?
I'm good, I, I talked long enough, I'm sorry.
All right, let's move on, uh, to the other reports, governance?
Uh, we worked on the CEO, uh, hiring process. And I, we got it done, I think, tend to wait, so it's on your, um, SharePoint to be looked at. And if you have any changes, send them to Dottie and, um, and Sheila, come over and see what you can do.
Yeah, all it is, is the hiring policy is already set and we added that little piece for the, for the board where it was CEO hiring and then admin hires. And so the CEO hiring process that we put in there was sorely lacking after we went through this whole thing. So we just put in the bullets, now the CEO hiring process that we did, which is more like a story, is also done. So that's totally separate, so don't get it mixed up.
Yeah.
So it's just an update to the hiring policy, so when you guys read it over, uh, I'll bring it back to vote next, next month.
I assume all the regular amendments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's just kind of a guideline for the future boards.
Don't have to adopt it.
Yeah. So they don't have to.
We just have to prove the amendments.
It's just a protocol, yeah, what we, what we did.
Okay.
But the CEO's story is a whole nother story, so.
Well, that would have been helpful to have in the process, I'm sure for us.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's the guideline, like you're leading this by, so thank you.
You know, we made a few mistakes and.
Well, how we wrote the CEO process was just like a story, just like it happened. And I, I bolded and read, put in rent the things that we did wrong, or the things we can improve. And so that we need to, you need to read that too and see what, what we missed, because there was so much to it that there, I'm sure that we missed some, we were kind of overwhelmed.
Tell us about it.
Getting a bit warm.
Okay, is that it for governance?
I think so.
Okay, great, uh, foundation? Foundation?
Connie.
Yeah. Basically, the group is really excited. We talked about some other fundraising opportunities. And it was just, one of the things that I took away from it or a suggestion, whatever, is that, that if the hospital has something big, that we let people know this is the big thing that we want to buy. So that they know where their money's going. Rather than, yeah, just put it in there and who knows where it goes.
Yeah.
So, having a specific project with a specific amount and...
Keep people aware that the foundation's helping. I agree with that.
Exactly, exactly, I think so.
We talked about offering the scholarships to all, not just, you know, a certain select group. And that the hospital would be the ones who would determine who needed it and would come to the foundation with the recommendation that this person would receive a scholarship.
Are you talking community?
We're talking the hospital, the hospital.
Just the hospital, not the community.
All the employees.
We come to the foundation, this is the amount we need for this person. But the, but the hospital already decided not having the foundation be the ones who decide who gets it.
Okay, okay, good.
So, eliminated that, you know, that piece that, I'm trying to...
And is it still really to better their current position and not for something?
And part of that application process is why, you know, why this would be a benefit.
Great.
So, can I add that you put up 5,500 for EMT scholarships? And we have one person who applied and I approved them, so they should be moving forward. So, that'll be six people total, if I understood everything from Gillette properly, going through the EMT classes coming up, starting, actually, it's just, you started this soon.
I started on Monday.
Yeah.
You have six?
I think we have six total people.
Do you know what the P is?
So, the P, they originally told me it was 1,100 bucks, but it looks like online it changed to 1,300, so, yeah.
We have a meeting next week.
Yeah, we'll...
Bring it up then.
Yeah, we'll talk through it.
Is that it?
I think so.
Okay, awesome, thank you. How soon did they meet?
We did not, September.
It's September 6th.
Thank you.
That's what I was guessing, so, that first one says. Oh, the second is... Last month, last time that was the first week.
I think it might be second.
Second is the second Tuesday.
Yeah, I think it is.
Wednesday. Oh, Wednesday. It's the week before August.
Yeah.
So, that would make it...
Yeah.
I, I don't really have much to say more than, you know, I mean, you can see we've been very busy. So, I don't have anything to add to the conversation so far.
That's just so wonderful.
The only thing I will add is, is that if anybody's interested to be on the finance committee, let me know. Because we have a vacant seat. Otherwise, I'm going to be the fill-in until there is someone else that would like to be on it or not. You know, it's, I know it's very difficult and it's difficult for time and it's also difficult for interest. And not everybody wants to be on the finance committee, so, but I just wanted to put that out there.
I love this new form. I love that new form, it's like, oh, okay.
Oh, the new form. Yeah, it's the Jamie Farnsworth form.
Well, I don't care, it's very, I say too.
Yeah, I do, I do.
I absolutely agree with that.
Do you know what I mean? You don't have to look through all these, what's this, this is a negative, but it only means positive. And this is a positive, it only means a slice.
Well, actually, I forgot to tell you, the credits and debits on hers are actually credits and debits as they would be in your bank account. They're not balance sheet credit and debit. It's weird, so we can understand it.
You're absolutely, we're just joking.
It's real, real time.
It's fabulous.
So, speaking of finance committee, I do not think it was okay that you guys just took it all.
No, it wasn't us guys, it was me.
Okay, well, I think there's more information that we could discuss and I don't think that could happen.
And it is, and it is, it is a function of mine, so, but we can talk about it soon.
I see that in the bylaws, but, but I don't think it was the right thing to do.
Okay, so noted, thank you. And we can't talk about it more later. Anything more from the board members?
Yes. I think we need to get a proper sized flag if we're intending to have...
Great.
I have that in my closet.
I love it, it's great, but I think we need...
I have two of them, would that work if we had two instead of just one?
You know, I have bifocals and it's really helpful.
There's one right there.
Yeah.
You need to get a medium sized one that still fits there, but isn't...
Little bigger flag.
We might be able to hang it in the corner.
Yeah, there's a hole there.
I don't know, it just feels bad.
I was excited that we even have one.
Well, it's great to have one.
I was excited, we were doing the pledge of allegiance.
You know, let's make it a nice flag.
So noted, stand, new flag.
I could just stand up there and you can pledge.
I have a comment, I just, today, you know, we saw from two presentations from two staff members. Jennifer's got up and spoke about what she's doing in finance. We heard from Keisha, is that right? And she was very, you know, well spoken on what, and you could tell she's very confident in what she's doing. And that helps, that's educating me when you bring these other people. We talk about building capacity in your employees, I mean, that's what it's talking about. Like these people are coming on and telling us what they're doing. We're not just hearing from the top, no offense to the top, but like, there's sometimes, it's nice to hear from other people and what they're doing. So, I appreciate that. I learned from that when I hear these people speaking.
There was a point in time when we used to have a department report and the whole department would come.
Right.
Now, granted, the manor might fill the whole room. But, and that was good to see put names and bases.
That helps me.
Well, do we have any other ideas for further, you know, employee engagement that you might have an idea about? Just to us know.
But my goal is to get all the subject matter experts in front of you. Because they know what they're talking about, but I know what they're talking about.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Make a motion and move into the second session for personnel.
We're not there yet, hang on.
I'm trying.
Do you want to talk about the hospital association meetings? Since this will be my first time in your experience.
So, you guys all got the invite for the hospital association meeting in Cheyenne. So, it starts the 30th and 31st. But are any of you going?
Is there an agenda out?
Yes.
It's on that new...
Yes, it's on the website, yeah.
Your speakers?
Yeah, yeah.
Who's going?
I haven't even looked at the agendas, I don't know.
So, Judd, Angie and I and Melissa are going. From the hospital and nursing home, because they do the leading age, which is the nursing home association.
Is it more, more for you guys than it is for the board?
Um, yeah, it is kind of, I can't remember.
It is, but I mean, most hospitals do have a board member there.
Too, yeah. Sometimes there is specific board education, I can't remember if there is this kind of...
I'm actually going up today before because there's a palliative care conference that counts for my ACHE credits. So, I'm going to try and score that the night before. So, I'll be there on the 20th.
Well, so far I don't have...
We'll do a report. And then we'll plan on going to the next one. I looked at the agenda, it was, you know, when it's more geared to, to the employees of the facility and the board. Yeah, so, no, it's good though, but who's going to be in charge?
We have our phones, trust me, they know our numbers.
Okay, good. Okay, the girls getaway?
Carmen's in charge.
Carmen's in charge.
They have her number too.
Are you talking about the girls getaway?
I sure can, would you like to hear about it?
Whatever it is?
So, it is an event we've done for, this will be our fifth year. And we're ramping up this year and trying to get more breast cancer awareness education out there. So, we are, we are doing that October 7th at the Med Center. We are inviting vendors and crafters and we will have some pampering things like Mary Kay and hand massages. And the, the girls in radiology have been working really hard on getting education, things together to make sure that everyone has that on hand. They even have a model to help explain what you need to be looking for.
Great.
It's going to be great.
Okay. The recognition banquet, the number four.
That's at the Med Center also.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think Denise, I think you're stuck still talking because you know more than I do.
And the, the theme is 1920s. Yeah, 1920s, right.
So, you don't have to be wearing flapper dresses.
Flapper dresses?
Flapper dressers.
Are you implying that we have those in our closets?
I have to find a tux and a top hat because I have to be like, dressed appropriately to hand stuff out, is what they told me, so.